All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. That's okay. You know, the problem is, the problem is that I don't think you should sit next to anybody, honestly.
Well, you know, I just liked to hear your thoughts.
I mean, I love talking to you, it's always fun, but you do talk a lot. It's great, though.
Actually, Commissioner Janowski also.
Oh. Oh, okay, so we're waiting for Singh, I mean Commissioner Singh may come. Yeah, we got a quorum now, that's why I was...
We're good to go.
I was gabbling. Are we being recorded?
I believe so, but I'll take notes in case.
Yeah, they have to take minutes.
This doesn't work. I thought the workshop didn't work on TV. I don't care, I dressed up, I'm good.
You did?
I didn't.
What? This is dressed up? Yes.
I'm just giving you so much tonight.
Man, no wonder I'm gonna sit closer to Claire.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, he's nicer, he's way nicer than I am. All right, I'm calling the meeting to order for Monday, August 18th, and we have a Planning Commission study session, work session, so let's all say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
There's another cable guy in the booth, you guys are off.
All right, thank you. Cable guy. All right, Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz, I understand is excused. Commissioner Egenberger here. Commissioner Foster?
I'm here.
Commissioner Janowski also is excused. Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Singh, not here yet. Commissioner Watkins also excused. Commissioner Weber?
Here.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Here, thank you very much. Do we have anything to add to the agenda or take off the agenda? There's an awful lot on there. Can we move something to the next work session?
We'll do our best. Definitely nothing to take off the agenda, nothing to add to it either.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. All right. Anybody want to make a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster to accept the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Patrick, any communications?
None other than the packet.
Okay. All right, very good. And we would normally have public comment at this point, but we have no members of the public here to comment, so I'm gonna skip that. And we have no public hearings, but we do have some old business. The zoning ordinance discussion on wireless communications. Patrick, please tell us all about it.
Sure. So we looked at the ordinance, the draft wireless communications ordinance several months ago, and there were a number of different things that we had in the draft ordinance, and we had comments in the margin also with areas that we were gonna circle back on and address. And in some of those areas, we did. And so what we're looking at doing is updating Section 6.02 S of the zoning ordinance to include more robust standards for wireless communications facilities. Right now, wireless communication facilities are only special land uses in the light industrial and general industrial districts, which really limits where new towers can go, and based on modern technology and the demands of wireless communications, there are more areas that are needed throughout the community. We've been contacted by a number of different representatives of wireless companies that are interested in locating towers in Canton Township, notably on some of Canton Township's public properties. And the decision of whether to locate a wireless facility on township-owned property will be a policy decision by the administration and the board. What we wanted to do was include in the ordinance provisions that would allow for that to be a permitted use, where a tower could be on township property, for example, the tower that's behind the building. So since the last draft of the text, we've included some language that allows for towers and communication facilities on Canton Township-owned property to be permitted uses, subject to approval of the Township Board, and subject to approval of an agreement that would allow reasonable township use of the property. These types of uses would include public safety uses, possibly public utility uses, maybe even uses by the school district for radio communications. With the tower heights that are permitted in the ordinance, and in this case, 199 feet, and the reason that's chosen is once towers get to 200 feet, then there's a light required by the FAA. But based on the maximum tower height, once the main providers are near the top, there's plenty of room underneath the antennas for other equipment, like public use equipment, as long as the tower is of sufficient height and structural capacity to handle additional antennas. So that's something that we've included in the initial draft in terms of towers being permitted uses on township property. But at this point, it's just a draft document, and it's something that we'll be reviewing with our legal counsel as well in terms of how we can finalize the draft language before we present it for a public hearing so that any terms that we have are legally defensible and anything else that we have to include there that's recommended by our attorney. So we haven't yet sent that to our attorney yet. We're still working through the major draft, and once the draft is completed, we'll send it for legal review before we schedule the public hearing. So at this point, because we've been getting a number of inquiries from the wireless industry and asking about the status of the ordinance and what the ordinance is going to include, we decided to make some additional revisions to the draft ordinance. It's still not done. There's still comments in the margin about what we still have yet to do, but we wanted to include some of the provisions that we've been talking about so that we can note progress to the industry representatives that are following the ordinance progress, as well as presenting it to the Planning Commission to note where we are with the draft text and to get any information or feedback from the Planning Commission about where we should be headed in the direction of our standards. After tonight, we'll be presenting the draft text again to the Planning Commission at future meetings. Whether it's complete at the next work session where this is presented, I'm not really sure yet, but it's not yet ready for the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing. So we're still at least a couple meetings away from this being presented in a format that would be acceptable to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing. So the basic structure of the ordinance, under the purpose and the intent, it's a really long paragraph, and it just covers some of the basics of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, as well as the Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities Deployment Act. And small cell wireless is something that we want to incorporate into the draft. We're still not there with some of the standards yet, but we have seen a number of different municipal ordinances out there that regulate small cell facilities. And one example of what a small cell facility is, at the southwest corner of Hagerty and Warren, there's a pole here. It's mostly for electric cable of the lines, but on this pole, there's wireless communication equipment. The type of wireless equipment on this pole is typically referred to as small cell poles, where it's fairly innocuous, and the state law on that allows for these facilities to be located in public rights-of-way if the height doesn't exceed 40 feet.
Is that the thing at the top? Sorry.
What's that?
Which part is the wireless thing?
The whole thing. The antenna, that's the antenna at the top, the box as you see on the pole itself is the associated equipment, the radios and all that sort of thing, batteries.
What's the curly cube?
That's rolled up fiber from whoever's fiber that is, whether it's AT&amp;Ts or... They string the fiber, whatever access they have, they just roll up on poles like that. You probably see that various places. That really has nothing to do with what is on the pole as far as it's small cell goes.
Patrick, okay, what's the function of a small cell as opposed to, let's say, a large cell? What's the difference? What I mean is, is the communication good for TV, radios, whatever, that wireless system we're working on? Or is it, it's not?
It's the same as, it serves the same, sorry, Patrick, I don't mean...
Go ahead.
It's your thing. Listen, man, this is your thing.
Doug's company is also, Urban Wireless Solutions, Doug's company is also advising Canton Township through a number of different telecommunications items. The ordinance and some of the best practices are one of several items that Doug's company is assisting us with. So he has technical expertise on this, as well as some insight in terms of where we are.
So he's an expert?
I'm not gonna go that far.
He knows more than I do.
So the role it plays is identical to a regular cell tower that you see.
Okay.
It just covers a much more, much smaller focused area and gets the RF signal closer to where it needs to be. And small cells have been utilized in areas that, obviously, you're not gonna put a tower like in the downtown area, or a single-family residential area or subdivision, or also in a crowded, busy business district where people are on their phones, devices, all the time. Because any given cell site only has a certain amount of capacity. In other words, it can only handle a certain number of calls, transmissions, whatever the usage may be at a certain time. Small cells have been deployed in some of those denser areas to help offload the traffic that is on the macro cells. You can't put, and when I say macro cell, a macro cell is like a cell tower. That would be a macro cell as opposed to this, which is a small cell. You get to a point where you have too many macros and they're just running into each other, basically. So you still, but you still need to get more capacity down at the ground level, basically. So that's the purpose of the small cells. I will say this about small cells in general, and they're still deploying them in big numbers, but not as big as they were, say, five or six years ago, because they're very costly to deploy. One small cell only covers about 500 to 1,000 feet radius, whereas a regular cell site can cover up to a mile. Again, depends on terrain, buildings around it, all that sort of thing. They're very costly to deploy en masse. Here in Michigan, primarily, they've dealt with putting them in the rights-of-way. That means dealing with DTE and Consumers Energy, which any developer and any business in this state will tell you that it might be the single hardest thing to get through when you're doing a development sort of short of dealing with governmental entities themselves. So they're finding out it's not the be-all and end-all that they had hoped it would be to be able to get them out. And because of the costliness of them, they've gone back to, they're gonna deploy more towers now. But the technology's changed so that, and the other part about it is you see them replacing cell sites now, again, because of costliness. They're on subsites where their rents, where they may have entered into a lease back in the 90s, 25 to 30 to 50-year lease, and those rents have escalated now to where they're paying $15,000 to $20,000 a month to be on that tower. And you, which doesn't sound like much to you and I as far as when you consider it a big company, but when you multiply that times, like here in Michigan, Verizon alone has 2,000 cell sites. Multiply, it obviously becomes a huge number. So all three companies are engaged now in also finding ways to reduce rent. Other things that they're getting off of, you've probably noticed that there are antennas on some of the electrical transmission towers throughout the township. You know, the corridor that runs across Canton Center here, that runs east to west here, if you notice. T-Mobile was a big, excuse me, T-Mobile was a big advocate of that, but they're now coming off some of those, none because, again, because dealing with DTE is a problem. Also, getting to those, because DTE and ITC have such stringent requirements as far as accessing those facilities for maintenance and all that, so it becomes a headache. So they're getting off some of those towers again, because, again, because I think they have found they weren't the solution that they had hoped they would be, in terms of getting rapid deployment of cell sites. There's a lot of interest in wanting to do towers here in Canton. Yeah, and people, we definitely need to be, our ordinance was fine when the industry was first burgeoning back in the late 80s and early 90s. I laugh all the time, because when I first started working in the industry, one of my former bosses told me, he was employed by a lawyer slash agent that was working for one of Verizon's predecessor companies to do the first cell sites in Michigan. He says, "It was the first nine cell sites," and they said, "At that time, this was middle 80s." They only ever need nine sites in Michigan.
Right.
So, obviously, fast forward 40 years and it's changed a lot, and everyone uses some kind of device. I mean, you asked about television and all that. Yeah, I mean, because people are streaming TV now. So they're, the wireless carriers wanna sell streaming services. They wanna sell, they wanna be the alternative to dealing with Comcast or AT&amp;T or whatever, you know? So yes, there will probably be, there will be more towers that come in, and it's not just true in Canton, it's every community. But at the same time, there's more demand for it, too. There are some parts of the township where, if you look at a map, technically, we all have coverage. I mean, we can all use our cellphone in our house, but it depends what you use that device for. And no one just uses their phone to make a call anymore. It's one of these things, basically. And you see it in places of the township where there's zero to no capacity to be able to handle that kind of technology. You know, especially if it's a densely populated subdivision. And I'll be honest with you, the hotspot that everyone's looking at is down in the southwest part of the township, at Cherry Hill Village, and those related subdivisions. So, you know, that seems to be the area of demand right now. All three carriers are looking around. We've had multiple tower companies come in and talk to the township about what we're doing. They're all antsy. You know, to the point where a couple of them I know, I wasn't in these meetings, but Patrick and the administration have told me about them, where you had a couple of representatives that come in and been kind of threatening about threatening litigation and all that, and whatever, that we're not doing anything to prohibit it, we're trying to work through it, is what we're trying to do, and make it easier for you folks.
Are we telling them until we get all the...
Though technically, right now, they couldn't. I mean, others are suing us. And as long as we can show that we're continuing to work diligently towards a solution, I think we're fine. And we're, I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong in making this statement, Patrick, I think we're close.
Yeah, I think so, too. Right now, there are available sites in the light industrial and general industrial districts. There's always the planned development option, not what I would recommend for a cell tower, because I think there are better options, and in this case, amending the ordinance. So there's nothing like a moratorium, or there's nothing like a refusal of us to amend our ordinance. We've been working through this, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to have a work session tonight, even though it's, you know, just one topic, just to kind of show publicly the progress that we're making, where we want to continue going, and a few policy-related things that we'll have to go through before it's ready for a public hearing.
About public property, you mean, but being...
Yeah, that they wanted to add that section that was part...
That's probably the one piece that we have to talk through with the administration and the board before it comes to the commission for...
Yeah. Yeah, before it comes back for a public hearing or for deliberations under this Category D in this draft, it was something that in the previous draft we had in the margins and of something that we wanted to introduce. So at this point, we just wanted to have something in writing of what this would look like and what the terms would look like. That way, for staff and for commissioners and the administration and our legal counsel, we can all take a look at it and see what direction we want to go with it. So we might not end up with a Category D option, just depending on the comments that come back or some kind of modified version, whether it's the terms of it or any specific permitted or prohibited locations. And then, at the end of the day, Category D only works if the Board of Trustees, if adopted, authorize an application on public property. So through the board or policy process, certain sites can be taken out. But, you know, that's something for more discussion. This is more of just an information item of where we are with it in terms of our first draft.
Doug, question. They're saying that it's just so difficult to work with DTE and ITC, because their poles would be a natural. Obviously, it looks that way, but they gotta, they can't get access when they want to, or things like that.
And the other part about it is, you can't just go on any DTE pole. DTE has very strict requirements about which poles are actually usable for things like this. Like if there's a transformer on a pole, that's a no-go.
Right, I can see that.
If it's one of those poles where you see, like at a corner, where you see multiple lines coming in, they won't allow that. If there's one of those cross things at the top, I can't remember them all.
Right.
But it's, there almost has to be nothing other than a wire on the pole for them to say, for them to allow it. Now, they will allow companies to put up their own poles in their right-of-way.
Okay.
But, and Patrick and I met with a company last week that wants to do what they're calling mid-cells, which is really just a glorified small cell. But it is a prettier structure, if you can use that term, but they want to put them up, but it would be more poles in the right-of-way. And I have mixed feelings about it. I mean, it is, I don't want to see cell towers all over the place, either. And I don't want to see all these wood poles with stuff on them, either.
Oh, they would be wood?
No, not necessarily. But I'm saying the way they are things right now.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, right now, there's nothing that says they can't put up a wood pole to use. And not to bring, I hate to bring too much of my personal experiences, but right, my current job takes me to Columbus, Ohio every week. And there's, just driving around down there, there are small cells all over the place in their highly-developed areas that are very, Patrick, you don't have any of those pictures from the Tulsa show that was last week, do you?
I don't think I got the presentation.
I wish I had some of the pictures to show from what they...
It's too many?
Pardon me?
It's too many?
No, the structures are attractive. I mean, they're not horrible. They're not a wood telephone pole. They look like, they usually blend in or at least look like they fit in with the type of developments in there. Like the area that I'm talking about where I spend most of my time is a highly-developed commercial area. There's lots of shopping centers, restaurants, offices, that kind of thing. So they're more contemporary-looking structures, but they're still poles, and there's different colors. I've seen brown, I've seen white, I've seen black, I've seen green. So they're adaptable.
Right.
I guess the bottom line is, there's gonna be a need for all this. It depends on the situation. You know, going back to the southwest part of the township, there's really nothing down there right now as far as infrastructure goes for wireless technology. The closest cell site is, on the west side, is at Ridge Road or Napier Road in Superior Township. To the south, down Ridge, there's one on Ridge as you get into Superior Township, just south of Houck Farm. To the north, I can't think of one, but anyway, there's not a lot feeding Cherry Hill Village. Or again, I mean, we know how dense it is down there now.
Well, do we need to add something to the ordinance that says that the...
I think, but I think, I can't remember, Patrick, aren't there, isn't there language in there about aesthetics?
Of the, of the main wireless pole?
Yeah. What you don't, but what I would caution you, though, is, are you talking about towers, Nancy, or are you talking about small cells?
Well, I'm just talking about what you were mentioning that was in...
Small cells?
In Ohio, so that, you know, it's somewhat attractive, I guess.
Patrick made a point that we don't really have the small cell provisions in this ordinance yet.
Oh, okay.
We've got some other cities' examples that have done things, and they do have some of that language in there. I think it's easier to do it for small cells, but you have to be careful, too, because everyone's definition of aesthetics gets kind of...
I was gonna point out.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like, everyone's ordinance about towers has the language about being stealth, meaning it looks like something else. And the most common one is a tree. And...
We've all seen those.
And the one that we always used as the poster child of this is the one up in Farmington Hills or West Bloomfield at Orchard Lake and Northwestern. And it was one of the first ones in Michigan. We always referred to it as the giant toilet brush.
I'm looking this up, I have not...
Because it's out of context. I mean, if you put it in, if you put it in context, an area that's wooded and that sort of thing, okay, it can work. I mean, there's another one over in Granville, Michigan, at Granville High School on their football field. I'm sorry, it looks like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree. So, as I've told Patrick before, be careful what you ask for when you get into aesthetics, because the traditional monopole like we have out here, yeah, you'll see it when it first goes up, but after a while, it really does just blend into the background.
Where is that at?
Oh, this is fascinating. I think they're terrible.
But it could have more...
It does. No, it does. You're right, it does. It reminds me of...
Is this the one you're talking about? That's what I was gonna go to, yeah.
No, that one's, that one's like in a real area. This one's dawned on the one that I'm talking about up at Orchard Lake.
I always forget that they put these layers. Come on, take me there.
Why do they look like...
There it is.
Yeah, that's not very well disguised.
And that's in the shot, that's in the middle of a shopping center parking lot.
Yeah.
So it makes no sense.
Right.
Now, another example of a stealth one is that...
Look at this one, man.
Yeah, palm tree. I don't think we'd want that here.
No, probably not.
You see those in Las Vegas a lot.
I bet.
One that we have here close by is at the Cadillac dealership on the end of a road, the clock tower.
Oh, is that?
The clock tower's a cell tower.
I didn't know that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I've noticed, I don't know if it's this one, but I've certainly noticed one that looks like this.
They're trying.
They're awful. I think it might be this one. It is really pretty.
But the other problem with a tree, that people forget about is adding those branches to a tower adds weight. And you appreciate this as an architect. So the more weight you add, the bulkier the pole becomes.
Right.
And then it looks like...
Yeah.
A smokestack.
Yeah, it's real big. Look how big that is compared to the shed there.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
That's probably 175 foot tall right there.
Yeah, if you put it in a place that has nothing else that's tall, there's really, I'm not sure there's any way to really...
Well, I mean, if you're in Superior National Forest...
Exactly. It would fit right in there.
Let me ask, the residents in Cherry Hill, are they complaining about service? It sounds like it's underserved. Are they complaining?
They're not complaining to us.
No, I haven't heard any direct, I've heard anecdotes of people that have trouble with service, especially during large events in Cherry Hill Village where there's only so much capacity and everyone's got a phone and an electronic device.
I know the supervisor has expressed that people have complained.
They have complained.
You know where else people complain about? Heritage Park.
Yes.
What's that?
Heritage Park.
Heritage Park?
Yes. Service there is terrible.
And again, there's, other than the tower here, there's not much around. And then if you have an event, and this is a good example of when you have an event with a lot of people at, when Liberty Fest is going on, for example, that's when the network's getting bogged down and that sort of thing. So when the park's in heavy usage, yeah, I can see where you're gonna have a problem. Out on the golf course, you know, whatever the case may be, so...
And in the, in the act for, the state act for small cells, it's designed to allow small cells in the public right-of-way that are not more than 40 feet high. But after the meeting that we had last week with one of the providers, these mid-cells... these mid-cells that are between 50 and 55 feet high, I think we want to explore whether we want to allow those mid-cells on public property because it may be a way to get more coverage on our public spaces without having any more towers than what we may need. So from a technological standpoint, that's something that we're looking to get more information on.
These mid-cells that we talked about, I mean, to me, I thought of Heritage Park right away when I saw these. I mean, if you had, if you had a series of those throughout the park, that would, and I would think Public Safety would probably be interested in that too, because I'm sure they would like to do, be able to do things like cameras and, you know, whatever their radio communications are and that sort of thing. So there's lots of good applications that can come out of this.
That's a good flag. I didn't even think about the public safety aspect.
Look at this. Have you seen one of the, I'm sorry. And she's doing this research, and this looks good. You see it's on the light poles?
Yeah, so I've, they have those in Columbus, too.
Yeah. That seems like an instant.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're very, very.
And that's a city on.
I'm not gonna say that, it's just they need more of them. And they, again, they, they cover a very small area.
True, but if you got them on light poles.
Light pole's already there.
Already there.
It's there, and if it can hold the, and if it can.
Right, that's the thing.
Those poles aren't necessarily designed for that extra weight.
I know. But it makes you think in the future as you replace poles. Because I'm thinking in the historic area, well, where we're trying to be in Cherry Hill Village.
Well, it's, there's been conversation about Cherry Hill Village.
I'm sorry?
There's conversation about what to do here, as far as where, as far as wireless goes.
Okay.
So there's, there's lots of different ways to skin the cat.
Um, let's not talk about skinning cats.
Okay, sorry.
No, she's a cat person.
Well, I know, it's so mine.
Okay.
Sorry, I just.
I think this is, this is really helpful, though, to really kind of understand.
Oh, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
What the different parts are and, and why it's so essential that we have this policy.
To piggyback on something, when Patrick first mentioned what my company does, when I was first hired by the township, my job was to be a consultant. I'd broadband consulting in, in terms of fiber. Like, you know, what do we, what do we have? What, what, why can't people get high-speed internet? Well, what this is involved, it's evolved into this discussion too, because this is becoming a legitimate alternative for people who are cutting the cord. I mean, they're, they're getting their internet wirelessly.
Oh, yes.
T, T-Mobile's really pushing it hard, and Verizon wants to.
We got Verizon.
So, I mean, in an ideal world, you could say to Comcast, I'm done with you, and I'm, I'm getting my internet from T-Mobile. Again, you would need more infrastructure. But if planned right, and that's why it's important to have this conversation. And I think it's important for the industry and the municipalities to work together on this because it's, and, you know, that's kind of the basis of my company. Because when I was in this business before, I spent more time and hours fighting with municipalities and such, trying to get the, and if we would've just figured out ways to make it be, work better, we would've, wouldn't have had that.
Well, you have to, because it's your residents that you're worried about. As a community, you gotta make sure that the service is.
And like, and like we said, when I, when I first started in the business, penetration rate for a cellphone in the market was like 40%. It's, if it's not 100%, it's probably 99% now.
Right, right.
So, and again, people use wireless devices for everything.
I know.
Well, and you have more than one, too. I mean, I've got, this is one of three iPads that I have.
If you have kids, and if you have kids in your house, you probably have a minimum of a half a dozen.
Yeah.
Plus wireless devices in our cars.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, I got Wi-Fi in my car.
Yeah.
That's right. Oh, it came with the car.
GPS, the GPS in the car. So it's not, and so when we think of towers, we're just thinking in terms of what, of the Verizons, AT&amp;Ts and T-Mobils of the world. There's really many other users potential, I mean, in, as I just mentioned, the summer, I mean, potentially for public safety. So, and one, just as another public safety thing, one of the companies that we've met for, with in the past couple of months, they're doing a, a thing with the city of Plymouth right now. Uh, the Plymouth Police Department wants their, they want the video of their body cams to be live as opposed to, as opposed to just recording.
So maybe somebody back at the station.
You can see it real time, yeah. But it requires some additional infrastructure on poles, whatever, throughout the downtown. So again, it's something else to be thinking about as we develop Cherry Hill Village, Heritage Park. So, anyway, lots of, lots of things to think about, but it's important to have this piece of the puzzle in place so we can help facilitate that. I didn't, I didn't write, Patrick, Patrick wrote it, so.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I.
How you feel being the expert, though?
Yeah.
That's important.
I do, I mean, especially compared to what we had. I mean.
Right, I mean, there's a lot of new stuff, it's.
It, as long, my feeling has always been, as long as we can have a process as opposed to being just a hindrance, that that.
Right.
That, that will keep things moving.
Yep.
I mean, if there, if there's a path to get to the, to the solution, then that's fine.
Okay.
I, every or, everybody's, every city's ordinance is gonna be a little bit different. Every planner is gonna be a little bit different, how they think things should be. Administrations are different. But you, but the end goal is the same.
Right, and there's, as long as there's a procedure to follow, which it seems like every one of these you got that.
And that's what the industry is like, yeah, if, if the industry knows they have a path to follow and it's consistent and not overly burdensome, they'll, they'll work with it.
Now, I, just so I understand, are the poles owned by individual company or do they kind of go together on one? Meaning Verizon?
So, so it depends on the scenario you're talking about. Now, the cell towers you see, they're owned primarily by, in private companies.
Okay.
Tower companies. The very few, it used to be Verizon, AT&amp;T owned their own, all their own poles, but they, through various transag, business transactions, they've sold off the management rights to them to companies called, like, American Tower, Crown Castle.
And then they, they rent it from them?
And then they lease, they lease back space on those towers from.
Then they don't have to maintain them, then? Is that true?
That, yeah, that's sort of a side thing to it. I mean, the reason they sell the towers in the first place is to raise money.
Got it.
To buy additional spectrum for them to transmit there.
Right.
Or what other improvements they want to make. So the towers are usually privately owned, I mean, but like, we own this one out here. AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T built it, but as part of that deal, they gave it to the township.
Okay.
Some municipalities own their own towers.
And you're leading me somewhere, this is where I'm headed. If you're in a subdivision and you got light poles, theoretically, you could add better service to your community.
You could.
By having these things come in.
It's another.
Like your HOA would say, hey, we'll pay for this?
Eh, I don't know if they'd pay for it.
No.
How would you get it, other than just?
They would lease.
Because they would, because they would want to.
Lease the poles, because then the, in the subdivision, you don't want it?
I'm thinking of it more profit. They want to serve us.
Right.
They, they put their poles where our lights are. You know what I'm saying? Light poles.
But how would it be a profit for you guys?
Meaning, first, we're not paying for it, we're not installing it.
Right.
But they're getting us to buy into their service.
Buy their service.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, profit for them, yeah.
Right. Like WOW's not in my neighborhood. They didn't come through when they first built.
Really?
We don't have WOW. And we can't get WOW, by the way. Because they gotta dig up everything.
Trust me, you're not missing anything.
I know, I, I've heard that too. But people have asked about WOW. And I, we looked, checked into it, no, they're not coming through there. I think they dug up everything the first time. And they put AT&amp;T and Comcast, I think, were the two. But WOW was not a lot, was not in there.
What subdivision are you in?
Ashton Woods.
Where's, where's that at?
Okay, Salts, the second end from Salts from Canton Center.
Okay. Well, Ripple's coming. I mean, they're not gonna, Ripple.
What's that?
Ripple Fiber.
Yeah, they're new, I've heard of them.
They're another fiber, they're coming, and they provide internet. They started working here in Canton in June, they started.
I'm gonna tell you another thing. The reason we switched, I'm thinking of things, cases I gotta deal with. We switched from, personally, from AT&amp;T to Xfinity. Well, Xfinity has great internet.
Yeah.
But AT&amp;T has a fiber optic, but it ain't in our neighborhood. And it, it's not even in our area.
We did a, fiber, fiber is, fiber is basically glass.
Yeah. But I mean, that's the fastest you can get.
They're expanding it, or am I thinking of somewhere else?
What do you mean, expanding?
Or they're rolling it out? Like, it's, they have it in some communities right now.
So what we, what we've learned is Canton itself, Canton proper has very little fiber. There's fiber in the main Ford Road, Michigan Avenue, down Morton Taylor. But in the neighborhoods, there's very little fiber.
Yeah.
Comcast, everything's on copper right now.
Exactly.
Now, AT&amp;T did just put some fiber down in the Cherry Hill Village area, but doesn't, but doesn't cover the whole, it's, it's more along Cherry Hill than it is back into the subdivision.
Okay.
Comcast, Comcast has been asked about deploying fiber elsewhere and, unless there's a.
Wait a minute, what'd you say?
Comcast has been asked about deploying more fiber.
Okay.
Changing their copper to fiber. They will probably do it on a as-needed basis. They're not gonna, they're not just gonna make it like a.
Well, I don't care, I don't even want them anymore.
So fiber is more for in-house internet speed? Cell towers are more for phone calls? Right, so what's, so what's the difference?
Not anymore.
Because you were talking about cell, cell towers and streaming, which I think of as kind of internet.
Yeah, it is internet.
Yeah, so what's the difference between fiber and cell towers?
Well, all right.
Or maybe I shouldn't say, I should say it this way. What does it accomplish? They both accomplish the same thing?
Well, let me say this first off. They are both, they need each other. Just, to, to have a cell tower, a cell tower has to have fiber cable to it.
Ah, okay. It's like your router.
It's called their back home.
Yeah.
And that goes to a switch somewhere, just like, just like in the old days when you made a phone call. You know, when all the lines went back to a main switch somewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
Cell towers need fiber. But the nice thing about a cell tower is, then you can put it, you can take the cell, all you need to do is get the fiber to the tower. You don't have to get fiber, well, how many homes are in Cherry Hill Village?
Got it.
Right.
2,000 homes, I mean, whatever it is. You don't have to take, you don't, in theory, I mean, it's like I say, it's gonna be this way, but in theory, you wouldn't have to take fiber every, all 2,000 of those homes. You get fiber to the tower, and then the tower can transmit, or towers can transmit all over the, the community.
They're burying fiber in my yard right now.
It might be Ripple.
Fiber for your.
It's AT&amp;T according to the.
Yeah. Don't you need fiber for your router?
I need fiber for my regularity.
For digestion, so many needs, so many needs. But, no, you don't? How could you have a router without a?
You have copper in your house. Co, copper cable.
We are going down some rabbit holes here.
That's what our internet is. I mean, that, I'm a.
But it's fiber, I mean, it's, but it's a cord, it's a cord, I think.
Yeah, one is glass, one is copper. Fiber's better because it's faster.
Fiber is faster, it can, it has larger capacity. It's, in theory, it should last forever. I don't know if I believe that, but in theory it should. Copper does degrade over time.
But you need, you need the cords to, to have that.
Yeah, you, you need it, that's what I mean, you need, but, in theory, you need both.
All right, well, this is a really interesting.
Robust discussion. How do we deal with, how do we deal with the people who don't want the towers in their yards, in their backyards?
Well, I'll jump over to the zoning districts. And the way that we, the way that it's written now is, it's only allowed as special land use in the light industrial and general industrial districts. So we've added the light industrial research district. And then we've added some of the lower-density districts, the RA Rural Agricultural District. There's very few of those properties. Cell, wireless communication structures and equipment would be special land uses in that district. In the RE Rural Estate and Rural Residential District, those are minimum lot sizes of two acres and five acres. There are not many lots that fit that bill, but some of them, most of them are in the western part of the community. That would be listed as a special land use in those districts. And then in the R1 district, the single-family, one of our single-family residential districts, it would be permitted as a special land use. And in the R1 district, the minimum lot size is one acre. So where the special land use availability would be expanded is mostly in the lower-density residential areas, because Canton is a relatively built-out community. And as we built out over the last several decades, our wireless communication standards have not really changed. And the way that our ordinance reads in terms of tower siting and setbacks and height, they're very similar to a lot of municipal ordinances that are out there. And I suspect if we had these available in more districts than just the industrial districts over the last couple of decades, we would probably have more towers here today just because there were, there'd be more areas where there's demand where a tower could be located. It might be difficult based on setbacks to lot lines and how high the tower could be in relation to the required setback. Now that the community is largely built out, the number of sites that are available are fewer and fewer. And I think that's one of the reasons that we're hearing from multiple providers that they're interested in locating somewhere on township property. And I've, I've heard personally from, from some of them, as many as half a dozen different township properties or areas that they're low, that they're interested in of increasing capacity. So, which kind of stands to reason because in terms of large, available, undeveloped spaces, the township does own a lot of those spaces. The major questions that would have to be reviewed later in the process would be, if the township's interested in hosting towers, which, which areas, which spaces are more suitable than others? Because not every space that a provider wants to go would be suitable. And in that case, if it's not suitable on a township property, there may be available properties in these other zoning districts that we've had in the ordinance. So when it comes to neighbors and the interest of the surrounding residential areas and surrounding business owners, as special land uses, notice would have to be sent within 300 feet of the property line. So everybody within 300 feet would get a notice. For the township-sponsored sites, it's listed as permitted uses where the notice requirement would not be in effect because the special land use notice requirement is a state-mandated notice requirement. So sending a notice to everyone within 300 feet for a special land use, that's required by state law. In our ordinances, we can exceed state law whenever we want to, as long as it's in the ordinance and justified. So the reason, the main reason we put them as potentially permitted uses on township property is not to circumvent a public process because the way that it's written, there would still be review by the Planning Commission and review by the board in open meetings. It was mostly to make it a little bit more of a streamlined process of, before an application is even made and agreed upon, it's done so with the administration, the board, and the potential provider so that there's some kind of agreement where it allows them to make that application. If we want to in the ordinance, we can still add a noticing component, or we can add that administratively. So that doesn't close the door on that. It just allows that application to be streamlined a little bit when it goes through the community.
A couple of points about the public properties, too. As Patrick mentioned, most of the true open spaces locked in the township are public spaces. So that are adjacent to single-family subdivisions and that sort of thing. So to get the service needed to the single family, this, it's, it's one way to facilitate that without putting it in somebody's backyard, per se. The other part about going on public properties and making it, even though it's a, would be a permitted use
The other part about going on public properties and making it, even though it's a would be a permitted use is it still gives the township control over placement a little bit because at the end of the day, the township owns the property. And if the township feels like this is not a suitable location, they don't have to say that we we just don't think that's a good spot where we don't want to do a deal there.
And I.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, even though we're gonna make it permitted use, weren't we gonna make it subject to site plan review too?
Yeah, um even if it's a permitted use, it's definitely require uh site plan reviews required. So the application would have to have all the information on a site plan for any other tower.
And come here.
Yep, it would be.
Public hearing?
Um, the way it's written, there wouldn't be a public hearing. But there would be site plan review by the planning commission and the board of trustees. So um whether it's a special land use or a permitted use, both the planning commission and the board, they review the application openly. And there are times during each meeting for public comment.
Of course.
So um people can still be comment, can still comment on it. They can review the application. The application materials would still be in the packet. It would be reviewed like any other application. The difference would just be procedure. And um as Doug had mentioned, with a potential tower on township property, that gives us more control. If somebody else was on um a private site and they meet the letter of the ordinance, but it's in an area that we don't necessarily prefer, but it nevertheless meets the zoning criteria and the special land use criteria, in many cases, we're compelled to approve it unless there's a reason not to. And that could read that that could lead to um, you know, some some worse sightlines, maybe some worse screening than we would prefer. Whereas if there's a tower on public property, we're able to negotiate that more as the host and to run that through different township departments and divisions in terms of what priorities are, whether it's um something that may be impactful to a public park or that may be useful to the public safety department or municipal services department where as a as an organization, we can collaborate in terms of what our municipal needs are on that tower. And that would inform the exact um location of it in terms of meeting all the needs of the organization and the community at large.
I'm bringing this up because I remember that meeting where we had the the organized opposition, I gather, from Westland saying that there's health effects of the cell towers.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, that, you know, and they ended up getting it getting us to vote against it.
Was that the was that the reason that voted you got voted down?
No, I don't think so. We had to find some kind of.
When was this done?
Uh, early two thousands.
Okay.
Was it that?
No.
I was with cause I that was my project. I was with Verizon.
No, I've only been on the planning commission for ten years.
Planner.
Yeah.
How long have you been planner, Patrick?
Uh, I've been with Canton about six and a half years and I've been the community planner for five years.
That happened before you were even here then.
Oh, I would have remembered if it was during my time.
Yeah, it was.
It was before my time.
But it was while I was on the.
It must have been before my time, yeah.
It was when I was on the board. I mean, I was on the zoning for the planning commission. Yeah, it would have been the early, I think I moved to the planning commission. No, it was here.
It was here.
Yeah, but the people were from Westland.
The tower, we were proposing a tower at Fellows Creek.
Yeah, I used to work in a congressional office and we got calls about cell towers all the time.
I thought it was a cell tower on a church property.
It was originally gonna be on Fellows Creek.
So were people calm down on that?
I will talk about all the history of why, then the township balked. So there's a church right there that kind of cuts into Fellows Creek down there.
Yeah.
We were gonna do it on that church.
That was it was it was, I mean, I think I've been on the planning commission since twenty fourteen.
That makes sense.
Maybe it was maybe it was around there.
Early that.
Maybe.
Yeah, it was.
Is there health issues?
No.
I don't believe it, no.
So why is that out there? Because I'm gonna tell you, there was a school. The principal lost her job because.
There's you get RF radio frequency um.
From your phone.
Off your phone.
Right.
Off from your microwave oven in your home. From if you have fluorescent lights in your home, you get it.
Heard that.
And from those big transmission.
Yes.
ITC corridor, geez.
If if you're up right in front of the source, like if you were up and stood right in front of a hot antenna, yeah, you're you're impacted.
Cause they showed the tree on here that died from the.
When when we when our workers go out or our, but when workers go up to service the towers or if there's antennas on a rooftop, for example, they either have to wear highly protective safety gear or they power down the antennas when they're up there working in front of the antennas. Even when we put a cell tower or antennas on a rooftop of a building, where it's very stringent standards dictated by the FCC in terms of barriers to make sure people aren't around them. But again, that's in close proximity to the antenna.
Got it.
Not at ground level, not.
Okay.
Not across the street.
Next village over.
And you know, just to echo that, there was a situation, I don't even know where, was it Inkster? But the principal lost their job because they signed a contract to put an antenna.
Wyandotte.
Wyandotte.
Cause to you.
And she lost her job.
Yeah, they agreed. That that was a bad, I mean, that was handled poorly by both sides. They they went in in the dark of night, basically, and agreed to a deal with the school to build a cell site like in twenty seventeen and T-Mobile never built it. Until about, I don't know, twenty-two or something like that. And then all the parents got wind of it and plus it was not elementary elementary school.
Got it, not around the little kids.
Big, no, no. I mean, I I just, even if I believe it's not an issue.
You don't want the little kids there.
The PR is not worth it.
Oh, no, it's not. You're right.
I think we always joke, we said, parents don't care so much about the high school. They figure their kids bring garbage.
At that point, you know, they've lost them.
But the little ones, they got a chance.
Well, what else do we need here?
Yeah.
Although this is very interesting, but yeah, do we? What do you need from us, Patrick?
And uh going back to the the public sites, the another reason is um as a township, with all the requests we're getting and um inquiries about new facilities throughout all areas of the township, we also want to try to minimize the number of towers. We're not saying no towers, but we want to try to minimize the number. And allowing them on public property in the right locations can have the effect of minimizing towers. And especially if we look at small cells and mid cells, if we look at those hand in hand in terms of their deployment, if we can find a way to maximize the coverage, fill in the gaps and minimize the towers and facilities that are out there, the township property may have an important role to play. Where if we if we don't have township property as part of the equation, we may see even more towers throughout the community because they're dropping a tower on an area that might need zoning, but it might not do much for capacity and coverage, which means that down the street, there's gotta be another tower to pick up that gap. So um by being able to um be in the marketplace with other available properties and try to um get the best coverage and try to minimize the towers, you know, we we could see better coverage than perhaps a lot of other communities and make us more competitive going forward.
So here's a map, I could probably email this to you, throw it up on the screen, Patrick. The blue is all the township owned properties across the township. And you can see obviously there's a lot down here, but it's kind of there's a there's a decent amount across the entire township. Those are every area that has been expressed has expressed interest or or the tower companies slash carriers have expressed interest in some aspect of that area.
Well, it's a way for to make money for township, right?
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, the the and Summer probably hears this in her job all the time now. But and maybe it's overused is the whole notion of public-private partnerships. And but it's legitimate. I mean, it's it the two do have to coexist. And um I think wireless communication is every bit as important as water, electric. You know, it's.
We all hate it when we don't have it.
So um so there's definitely a there's definitely a need for it. You know, Patrick pointed out too that the control aspect of it, there's there's many ways that we can implement if as long as we're working cooperatively with cooperating with the industry, I think you'll see lots of different good aspects that come out of it. Yeah, Patrick says we don't want to see a lot of towers. Well, trust me, they don't want to build a tower if they don't have to. I mean, that tower costs minimum four hundred thousand dollars to develop. So you know, the the fewer they can do and then if there's a cross, you know, if there's a subset of small cells and mid cells they can use to augment the the network in the township that's our community, that's great. One last thing, Patrick just mentioned about making Canton more inviting from a technological standpoint. As as you all know, the supervisor is very much into technology and wants to see is a big advocate of that, especially what's happening or she's trying to make accomplished with the main and that's what I think. So this is this is another potential piece to that puzzle, so.
How much is a small cell, small cell? You said the four hundred for the tower, how much is a small cell?
They don't have to put in build the pole itself. If you're just talking about the antennas and the and the radios, they can do it for about ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, much less.
But much less bang for the buck.
Right, right, it doesn't cover enough. Yeah.
Um, so at this point, we'll keep working on the ordinance, especially the areas in the margin. There are a lot of things that we have to do with the small cell regulations to incorporate them, not just from the zoning standpoint, but in our general police power ordinances. Many communities have small cell provisions there and we might have to do some cross referencing to make sure that that's covered. In the meantime, we'll be working internally with um getting information from the carriers in terms of specific sites, specific coverage areas. If they're willing to share any kind of propagation maps that allow us to anticipate generally the areas that they're looking for and um roughly how many more towers the community would need to fit, to fill in any service gaps. Also, um at a future meeting, we can present maps of township owned properties. It wouldn't necessarily say, you know, which maybe candidates. We're, I think, a ways away from making determinations there. But it would be a supplemental document just in terms of if we allowed them as permitted uses on township properties, where are the available township properties where hypothetically towers could go as they get considered in the future? So um that's really it for the presentation. We just wanted to present the text so far and let you know the direction that we're going and that we'll be bringing it to a future work session to discuss in more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I move we adjourn the meeting?
Um, I had a question. Well, let me go back to the agenda first.
We wait to after your question to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I just I was curious. I I would love to know what your thoughts are on what's going on in Peninsula Township. If you are willing to talk about that or you know what's going on up there with their big huge lawsuit about the wineries.
Yeah, I've heard about that.
You mean like up north?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
We should adjourn the meeting and not have this as part of the.
Oh.
Well, like it's another community, don't you think?
Yeah.
I do have I do have some insights after we adjourn.
Okay.
About that.
Okay.
About that.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Do we have do we have any um any new business?
Uh, no new business.
Okay, how about miscellaneous staff reports, commission liaison comments?
Nope.
Progressing.
They have um they've submitted revised plans based on our initial staff comments. And uh we've replied to those plans, so a lot of items that they have satisfied in our comments. There's a few things that we're working with them on, having the complete plans. And once they're complete, they'll be ready for a public hearing. We're working with um our traffic engineering consultant and Sheets with their traffic study, as well as Canton Oaks, who we had the public hearing for earlier this month. And what we're doing is we're taking both projects, we're running the models as together and separately, just to kind of scenario plan to see what the impact of traffic would be on each development if they're done together or if they're done separately. And um also running models with or without the Top Canton project. So it basically, we want our traffic engineering consultant to do some scenario planning so that they can come back with information to let us know what the traffic impact is under a number of different scenarios. Because we've got three fairly significant concurrent projects near that intersection. There's no other place like it in the community where we have a number of different projects, different timeframes and potentially significant impacts on the intersection if there are not improvements or they're not collaborating with each other. So um there's still more work to be done there. I'm not sure what the timetable is, but we've gotten some information from the applicants in terms of their sync profiles and their model that our traffic consultant will be looking at. So um hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll have more information from our traffic consultant on that.
So so as I piggyback onto that, then everyone knows about the M dot meeting on Wednesday night.
Yep.
Ford Road, I figured you did, yeah.
No. No, I don't know.
Talking about Ford Road.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. I would go if I I'm not gonna be in town, otherwise I would go.
What day is that?
It's Wednesday.
At four o'clock.
It's out here?
At the at the summit.
At the summit, okay.
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
What about Portillo's and Chick-fil-A in Top Canton, anything?
Nothing recent, um but the I wouldn't consider the project as um discontinued. It's still an active application and yes.
Even that one?
Even with Top Golf?
Pardon?
Even with Top Golf?
Well, in light of the of Eagle's denial of the wetland permit several months ago in the area of the Top Gulf, I'm not sure what the status is of that particular part of the development, but um.
But they asked us to do the approval after they already knew about Eagle's denial. That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that doesn't put us in a position to take action on it when there's a state agency that is obviously going either going to require revised plans or an appeal through the state process and.
I mean, that's why I wonder if they just need us to do the process to have that denial or whatever to go to do an appeal or whatever. Cause sometimes when you go through an appeal process, you have to say that you exhausted all your all your remedies. And maybe that's just part of the process. I don't know, I'm speculating.
But didn't they only have sixty days for an appeal or something?
Yeah, I think there was a there was an appeal period of a number of days. And I'm not sure if they did anything within that timeframe to to file an appeal with the state. But my understanding is that um separate from that, um I've heard that the fast food restaurants are still interested. And the wetlands in those areas are less protected than the ones near the proposed Top Gulf. So if there are revised plans, there is potential where the fast food restaurants would be part of that. I think it was the Top Gulf part, but some of that may have been affiliated with the restaurants for the private road drive and for the stormwater management. So if there's an amendment to the plan to do something that Eagle is more likely to approve, then they might have to revise some of the development on the south side. And um that could look different than what we previously saw. And if it is, which it may be, it would come back to the planning commission.
What else is coming?
Well, we've got a few public hearings scheduled for, well, two public hearings scheduled for September. One of them is Fillmore Place. And that is on the west side of Beck Road across from the Target, just north of Michigan Avenue. That area is currently under construction and the single family attached units are along Beck Road. And they're starting construction on the roadside and then working their way westward with the development. And um on the west end of that development is where the the more dense development and the townhouses are proposed to be located. And the developer is proposing to remove the townhouses and instead do some detached single family residential on the west side. So it'll be a reduction of approximately a hundred and fifty units. So that would require an amendment to their planned development district. So they will be back here um I think September eighth for their public hearing. And then the other public hearing for September eighth is there's a proposed car wash that is in.
Meyer.
Uh, west of Meyer, uh just east of Antonio's parking lot. So we're working on some plans with the applicant with their most recent submittal. And we'll be providing comments to them within the next couple of weeks on those plans. But in the meantime, it's only a special land use application at this point. So um the plans are sufficient enough for planning commission consideration. But there are a number of standards to review that we'll have to work through with the applicant and with the planning commission. And we're still working our way through that as staff.
One of the chains, is it one of the car wash chains?
Yeah, it's a company called Clean Express.
Oh, yeah, I've seen them.
Yeah, but that's that's not our problem.
The banks must be funded, I'm saying.
I will say this and and just again, because of my recent experience, as much as I've had to be down in Columbus, I first of all, I'm convinced Columbus is the fast food capital of the world. No, it's not. Well, you would trust me, cause in in Columbus, I swear, there's ten of every type of fast food you can think of in Columbus.
Anything we should be looking at?
Chicken, Chinese, Asian, Mediterranean, Italian, pizza, burgers, whatever the case may be. It's just, it's crazy how much food. And I I had heard at one time that Columbus was like a major test market for fast food restaurants because Wendy's is headquartered there, White Castle's there, Chipotle's there. So it's it's definitely interesting to see a different city on a regular basis and see what's what's what. And you get thoughts and you bring back here to say what's what are we doing? What are we doing wrong? What are we doing right? All that kind of stuff, so it's it's interesting, but and there's a lot of car washes and there's a lot of Sheets. Lots of Sheets.
Really?
Yes.
Could have been a Sheets.
It could have been a Sheets. Seriously, my mom dated a Sheets. Yeah.
I I knew that. I I'd heard that before.
Are we adjourned?
No.
No.
No. Move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by.
Let's talk about Peninsula Township.
Webber in support by Commissioner Foster, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.